We begin with the President and the whole staff. Tell us, what is your position? Thank you very much. And we are going to start. Maybe let me start by introducing those that are here. Maybe let me start with our interpreters there. Anybody can talk in any language. We will have our interpreters. We've got our staff there. If there's anybody who has got a written submission, you can submit it to them there. My name is Jerome Maki. I'm the Chairperson of this Aro Committee.
Good morning, my name is Peggy Hadebe. Hadebe, with an H, a member of the committee.
Morning, morning. I'm Colonel Barnard. I'm also a member of the committee.
Good morning. My name is Bolilan Mavaneshe. Member of the committee.
Morning. Now, the next speaker is a member of the committee.
Assalamualaikum. Good morning. My name is Fadi Fendrich. I'm a member of the State of Committee and I'm the President of All Jama.
Thank you very much. Maybe I will start by explaining the purpose of this, especially for this bill, and what would be expected from citizens of this country in relation to this bill. And maybe if you were to repeat that.
Good morning, all firsts. What I am here to do is to do what we work here and to further it. And what we want from the Africans of South Africa, as far as it goes, more than we work here. So we want to get together and say to them.
The consideration of the General Intelligence Law Amendment Bill 2023 is a significant step in addressing shortcomings in the South African intelligence services. It provides an opportunity to legislatively address recommendations, redesign intelligent structures, and improve accountability. The proposed changes aim to align legislation with the recommendations of the Zongo Commission, High Level Review Panel into the State Security Agency, and the Constitutional Court judgment to enhance the work of the intelligence services. This process signifies a commitment to creating transparent and accountable intelligence services for the benefit of all citizens. The work of South Africa's intelligence services is important as it informs policy that influence everyday life, from the security measures implemented at port of entry to the responses to public health crisis. For instance, intelligence plays a critical role in cybersecurity, protecting individuals from data breaches and identified theft, preventing terrorist attacks, and contribute to the stability of financial markets. To ensure that the intelligence services can fulfill their functions appropriately, effective intelligence laws are needed. The laws will balance the proper functioning of the intelligence services while upholding the rule of law and protect protecting civil liberties. These laws also establish clear boundaries, prevent overreach, and foster trust between citizens and the government, striking a balance between security imperatives and individual freedoms. The establishment of the SSA Group Presidential Proclamation in 2009 was irregular, deviating from constitutional requirements. Despite subsequent legislative amendments, challenges persisted, leading to the formation of the High Level Review Panel in 2018 to address issues within the SSA. The General Intelligence Law Amendment Bill of 2023 seeks to implement the recommendations of the High Level Review Panel by undoing the SSA and creating distinct domestic and foreign intelligence services, clarifying mandates and addressing legal and procedural shortcomings. It aims to enhance accountability, compliance with Constitutional Court judges, and regulation of intelligence activities in executing its legislative mandate, Parliament seeks to gather public input into the bill. Public participation in the legislative process is of paramount importance as it ensures a truly representative and democratic governance system. Involving the public in the crafting of laws fosters transparency, accountability, and inclusivity within the decision-making framework. By seeking the input of citizens, Parliament can gain diverse perspectives, valuable insights, and a better understanding of the valid needs and concerns of the population. This engagement not only enhances the quality of legislation but also reinforces the legitimacy of the democratic process, empowering individuals to contribute to the laws that govern them. Ultimately, public participation serves as a cornerstone for a well-informed and responsible legislative system, promoting a sense of ownership, trust, and collective responsibility among cities. We're going to move on to the process of hearing and the non-fulfillment. All contributions are significant and hold value. However, to enhance the overall process, we currently ask all participants to adhere to a specific protocol. If you wish to submit, please raise your hand. Okay, I can come to that. I see everybody is agitated. Let me just finish the procedure. A maximum of ten participants will be accommodated in each round to ensure smooth proceedings. Upon receiving your assigned number, please take a seat in the designated chairs according to numerical order. Each participant is allotted three minutes to present their submission in a language of their preference. Interpreters are allowed to repeat "allocated three minutes". Participants with written submissions are encouraged to submit them to the secretariat's team, which is sitting on my right. The Aro Committee's goal is to thank everyone present for taking the time to take part in this public participation process on the GILUP 2023. Your input will contribute to a well-balanced and parallel concerted role that exists to improve South African intelligence services. If members could focus, you know, in our input on the bill itself, because sometimes people are... Their inputs will be more unsolicited than on the bill itself. So if we could please focus on the bill. Thank you very much. I think I can come with the hands. We already have number one. Can we have number two? You are number one.
Number one.
Uh huh. Number two. Number three, number four, number five, number six. Then you'll sit in that row. Number seven, number eight, number nine, number ten. So you move those seats. In that order. I'm not very sure because I see we even have got ladies here. I think they are allowed to raise their hands. I think we... When we are ready.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chairperson. My name is Fahli Moussa. And can you see, I'm from Mishal Spleen. One number, one one six. In this talking table. in the city of Keta. As a member of Al-Jamaah. I came here to deliver on behalf of people with disabilities representing Al-Jamaah. As you can see, I am a disability, and I'm here today to talk to you as parliamentarians about people living with disabilities. We want all to be inclusive, and we want G-Lab, eh, to become more inclusive, and when you do things that have to do with the safety of people in South Africa, people with disabilities have to be included. I consulted with my community, and I'm trying to please all, eh, women and people with disabilities. They will help in enhancing our country's safety. We don't have more experience, but if you include us, we will all have an experience and know how to contribute in our country's world and safety. Thank you so much, we support you.
Thank you very much.
Assalamualaikum, good morning, we are all waiting. My name is Abigail Shnamigasali, I live in Sabra Park, Atle, 66, in the city of Keta Municipality. I'm a councillor for Al-Jamaah Party in the city, I'm the national spokesperson for Al-Jamaah, and I'm representing the party making this decision. There are similar concerns that we have in the vote, the vagueness they are, lack of oversight, and the harm that it takes to impose on citizens at large. I, however, specifically wish to raise my concerns around the protection of personal doctor as stated in the vote. There should be clauses in the vote to prevent the ruling and governing parties from spying on councillors and politicians belonging to opposition parties. Not so long ago, we had a place in the city of Johannesburg, when it was a D A. It was discovered that the D A had used spying equipment against councillors from other opposition parties. It is imperative that this vote include a clause against spying on councillors and politicians. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm a member of the South African Committee, my name is Elizabeth Torres, I'm a legal with Freedom of Religion South Africa, a legal advocacy organization mandated to protect the constitutional rights and religious freedom in South Africa. We agree that the public, eh, the need to protect the republic and its people and its national security, not threats, is a lawful and lawful constitutional objective. However, we feel that the vote needs to be approved to ensure that all fundamental rights and freedoms are protected at the same time. The vote requires the South African Executive Agency to conduct security competence tests on persons or institutions of national security anyway, and thirdly, these tests determine whether to issue or decline a security clearance certificate. Now, from a religious freedom point of view, we are concerned that the wide overhaul and vague definitions of national security, personal institution of national security, it is a threat to national security, especially when a red section of 198 of the Constitution are so wide that religious institutions, including their leaders, their employees, and the members who engage in law or political activity, advocacy, protest, or dissent, might be caught in the wide range of the law and may inadvertently be misidentified as threats to national security, as, eh, as of national security interests, subjected to invasive and secretive investigations, that oversight, and counter-identity, and recourse, and ultimately be refused, clear, security clearance certificates, and by implication, might be mislabeled as terrorists. And we are concerned that the, the consequence of being refused a security clearance certificate is not clear. We are specifically concerned that it might mean that religious organizations that are refused clearance might be forced to shut their doors. For us, that might mean direct state interference with religion and the rights of religious communities. So, we believe that these are potential problems and be solved by tightening mainly certain definitions in the vote, namely the definition of national security, the definition of free to national security, and the definition of person or institution of national security interest. There are other definitions that can be improved, but those are the main ones. And also, to, eh, make an exclusion, that those engaged in law, political activity, protest, and, eh, eh, dissent are excluded from security, they can investigate, and that these investigations are also limited to those persons who, eh, work with intelligence of the state or engage with critical infrastructure of the state. We tighten that. We believe that if this is done, we can uphold that properly protects our national security, which is very important, but also uphold the fundamental rights and freedoms of the people of South Africa, including the religious community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, eh, can I request, I see you've got a prepared, eh, if you could, eh, maybe forward it to our secretary.
We will with an email or a proposal, if you can go with the 1510.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, my good members, some of whom have had occasional meetings and some of whom are still faculty. I'm Danielle Eureb, I'm a attorney and the Constitutional Programs Manager of the A W C Foundation. The foundation is dedicated to uphold its constitution and make our constitutional democracy a reality for all South Africans. The foundation remains a swift role that has as intention, intention, to align South African intelligence services to the High Level Panel's recommendations to split the foreign and domestic intelligence services. However, the foundation is concerned that the vote directly infringes upon various constitutional rights, for example, privacy and access to justice. The state is not only bound by these rights, but is in fact constitution obligated to uphold, protect, and promote them. Now, the vote's broad surveillance scope risks eroding privacy, empowering state interference, cycling dissent, and endangering democratic principles, raising concerns for reviews. Now, the next effect of the vote will be that it will empower the South African intelligence agency tasked by the vote with domestic intelligence to conduct security competency tests on, quote-unquote, "person or institution of national security interests." Now, these tests are for the purposes of issuing a security clearance certificate. The implied risk is that, should you fail to obtain a security clearance certificate, you will no longer be able to continue operating and possibly even face criminal prosecution. Now, the vote contains various problematic definitions, which the foundation will fully canvas in our recent submission to be submitted later this week. The most important to note are that, first, threats is undefined. Now, threats is a crucial concept underpinning the entire vote, as well as various other definitions. The second is that a person or institution of national security interest, it sounds depends on two concepts, both of which are problematic. The first is that their, eh, a person's activities are seen as being inconsistent with section 198, can be seen as opposed of interest. The problem is that any section, any action that is seen as affecting South Africans' resolve to live as equals, learn peace and harmony, and if people fear and want and to seek a better life, is contributing to section 198. So, you have this very wide section, and the unintended consequences of such an overbroad definition is that potentially, everyone could be seen as a person or institution of interest. Now, third, national security and opportunity or potential opportunity are highly problematic because the definitions are circular. This will be properly explained in our recent submission, but this raises various other definitions in the vote and one of them. Four, the definition of security competency test contains a disjointed reading. In other words, the use of an or as opposed to an and are factors, making it overbore, because literally, every citizen in the republic can be deemed to be vulnerable to, example, quote-unquote, manipulation. But this does not mean that they are a threat to national security and that the state should be able to administer a security competency test on them. Adding to these problematic definitions, the vote makes a compulsory for the agency to conduct vetting investigations to determine security competency. Again, for the purpose of issuing this security clearance certificate of persons or institutions suspected of being threats or potential threats to national security. Now, given the vote's problematic wide definitions, these clauses will allow civil society organizations and those working for them, such as the foundation, to be seen by the agency as persons or institutions of national security interests, and to subject them to a vetting investigation to determine their security competency. In other words, should they be granted a security clearance certificate or not? Now, if you should not be granted a security clearance certificate, the implied risk is that you will have to close your doors and you will not even face criminal prosecution. All of the above makes the vote open to abuse by future governments wishing to threaten or even silence voices critical or opposed to it. In light of this, the foundation proposes the following remedies. Again, these will be fully canvassed in our recent submissions submitted to the committee later this week. The first is, let's define all the phrases. The foundation submits that there should be defined as impending danger of serious harm to the republic as one sovereign democratic state founded on the values set out in section 1 of our constitution. The reading should be replaced by a conjunctive reading, so that the definition reads that this is administrative investigation to determine the security competence of a person in order to determine whether such a person is suitable to classify information or critical infrastructure on the state. Such rating investigation should consider whether a person is a security compromise because they are seen as vulnerable to blackmail, undue influence, or manipulation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, eh, I wonder if that was still in it. Eh, so you can forward or email, eh, to, to the secretary.
Good morning, everyone, eh, my name is Mike Schwartz, and I'm here to represent Intelwatch, a advocacy organization that's from.